All right. Good evening, everyone. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, if you would.
Mr. Berkowitz.
Here.
Ms. Grignani.
Here.
Mr. Joskowitz.
Here.
Mr. Petty.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Ready.
Cousin.
Mr. Willing.
Here.
Chairman Kaplan.
Here.
The other board planner, Mr. Chadwick.
Our board engineer, I'm sorry, Mr.?
Wallow.
Wallow.
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Here.
All right. It's time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure. Mr. Chadwick, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Wallow, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm any testimony that you give tonight should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. At this time, I will open the meeting to the public. If there's anyone in the audience who has any business to conduct in front of the board that is not on this agenda, now is your time to come forward. Okay, no one's come forward. We will jump right into application twenty-four twenty-nine. Frank in Unit Chi, thirty-two Bordeaux Drive.
Come forward.
Come on up. Come on down. First, raise your right hand.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Can you state your name and spell your first and last names?
M-R-A-K-C-H-I-H.
And give us your address, please.
Uh, where I'm living now or where you're from the property?
Well, where you're living now, and then you can talk about the property.
I'm living at seven two fifteen US one six, um, or seven zero seven one five four, eight four thirty-two Bordeaux Drive.
Okay, you can have a seat.
You can have a seat.
They can't hear you back there.
Just make sure you speak into the microphone. You can pull it up close to you. You can hold it if you prefer. Um, you are here because you require several variances. Um, you are looking to construct nine hundred forty-five square foot one-story addition to the property, one hundred eighty-seven square feet of a roof, front porch, eighteen square feet of front stairs, one hundred fifty-five square feet of a front walkway, four seventy-two for a deck, eight square feet for rear stairs, seven hundred fifty-one for new driveway and expanding it, eighteen square foot for a generator, and twenty for AC units and the pads, um, handful of front yard, side yard, building coverage, impervious coverage variances. So, with all that said, if you would please describe what you are looking to do in greater detail and why you require these variances.
Um, I'm looking to expand the current property from two thousand square feet to about three thousand square feet.
Can you speak into the microphone? You can tilt it up. Thank you.
Hello?
Perfect.
There you go.
So I'm looking to expand it from two thousand to three thousand square feet. Um, I will be a grandfather this January, so I would like to have a little bit more room for my daughter to, uh, come and bring her, uh, bring my granddaughter over to, uh, to stay with us sometimes. My parents are eighty years old, um, eighty and eighty-two, and I would like also for them to come and stay with me sometimes, so I wanted to, instead of building a second story, expand my existing first story.
He's preparing the two microphones.
So that's basically what I would be trying to do. Just give myself a little bit more room for family.
Okay, you're, you're keeping this as a single-family home, parents aren't moving in?
No, just for them to visit.
Okay.
What is the purpose of the additions?
Um, for room for family to stay when they're visiting.
Are these a living room, a bedroom, a bathroom?
Uh, it's a, for a bigger kitchen. Um, there's still, we're gonna make the bedrooms bigger and additional spaces for a fourth bedroom.
So one new bedroom, you have four bedrooms?
We're taking away one bedroom. It's a four-bedroom house right now, so we're taking away one bedroom on one side to make the other bedrooms a little bit bigger and adding a, keeping a fourth bedroom but in a separate part of the house.
The new deck, do you know how that's gonna be constructed? The question is, will it have gaps between the deck, the four pieces, or will it be done in root and hard surface?
Um, it's, I'm not, I'm a layman when it comes to construction.
What we're concerned about is runoff. So if the water can get through the deck, that's not such a big issue. It's gonna run off like roof water than it is.
Um, it's a track deck. That's what we're putting back there.
Okay, so it's not done in root.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
So I guess you're, you're saying you have a one-story addition. You don't wanna go up two stories of the house. You wanna expand the footprint of the house, right?
Correct.
That's why you have a need for, uh, a variance for impervious coverage and building coverage, okay?
Correct. The house is currently like an L-shaped house.
Yeah.
So I'm basically squaring it off.
If you went up, you wouldn't have any of these variances required.
Uh, that's correct, but since my parents will be there and, um, my granddaughter's gonna be staying with us, I'd rather keep it as a ranch to avoid any accidents, you know? I don't want my granddaughter as a baby running up and down stairs. I don't want my parents going up and down stairs when they're eighty years old.
They're gonna live there with you permanently or just temporarily or occasionally?
I'm sorry?
Are they living with you permanently, your granddaughter and your parents?
No. It will only be myself and my wife, and I want to expand the room for a family to come and stay with us during holidays, birthdays, and things like that.
Well, the way you're describing it, you're basically making the number of rooms bigger?
Correct. Keeping the same number of bedrooms, making them bigger.
Have you thought of making the addition smaller? Variance is, is, you're supposed to have twenty percent coverage. You're at twenty-nine?
Yep.
I mean, it's almost?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
For building.
So you're, well, you're twenty-five percent over. What size are the rooms now and what size will they be when you finish? You mean one of the rooms? Are you expanding one of the bedrooms?
Um, so let's say the current size of bedroom right now is probably, I would say, maybe around, I think, like nine feet by eleven feet?
Small.
Small, yeah. So I'm kind of taking that and making it a little bit bigger into, I think, twelve by twelve?
Fifteen or something like that.
Yeah.
The kitchen is the same foot as the kitchen house?
The kitchen, I'm expanding it so that I could put an island in, so that we can have an?
So you can eat?
Eat at the island, yes. Currently, there's no island space for an island there. It's a very small kitchen.
Well, basically, what you're taking is small rooms and making them bigger for just?
Correct.
Provenability, okay?
Yeah.
Do you, are you familiar with any runoff issues on your property now?
No, there are no water issues on my property right now. I had the architect go through the whole thing, and I also had, um, him bring an engineer over to just take a look at it.
What about neighbors? Any issues with neighbors and water runoff from your properties to theirs?
I didn't see any. And I visited my property, and I walked in after rainstorms just to go and take a look at it.
Are there houses on both sides again?
There's houses on both sides and in the back.
Have any of them, uh, have you talked to them about your plans?
No, I haven't spoken to any of my neighbors.
Yeah, concern is your plan is, you know, there's, while we might look a part of it de minimis, frankly, some of it's not so de minimis. When you're looking at side yard set book, when you're looking at total coverage and pervious coverage, so those are all pretty significant variances you're asking for, okay? So the neighbors might have something to say about it, I don't know, but nobody's here, right? So?
We don't know yet.
Yeah, we don't know yet, okay.
If we were to say to you, so you're allowed ten percent building coverage, you're proposing twenty-four percent. If we were to say to you, you have to reduce it a little bit, what would you reduce?
I'd probably have to take away one of the bedrooms.
Anything else from the board?
Oh, I just, and this is in an R-two zone.
Yeah.
So the R-two zone?
Tight.
If it were an R-three zone, he wouldn't, wouldn't require as big a variance. And that's really what that, that area's like. It's more like an R-three zone. Gold, gold ends. Wasn't this R-two, wasn't that part of some kind of deal or something where they did divisional zoning, John?
You know, this, this is an old neighborhood, and there used to be some kind of a, it wasn't a cluster provision where you get a park out of there or something like that, but there was something in the ordinance. This is a long time ago.
Yeah.
You know, forty years ago or something like that.
Well, the houses are sixty years old.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's a standard-sized lot for the neighborhood. I mean, they're all fifteen thousand.
Fifteen, more or less.
One hundred by one fifty, yeah.
Which is R-three.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right.
So anything you do on those lots, someone's gonna need a variance for it because of the R-two.
Yeah, we get, restrictions are a little bit more, yeah.
Stern.
I, I do think, well, the chairman's question of reducing the addition is kind of what we're always talking about. I mean, you might need to rethink the size of the new bedrooms, the size of your kitchen. Uh, but why don't we see if anybody says?
Okay. Anything else from the board? Okay, just?
One, one thing to add.
Sorry.
Just given the extent of the new impervious surfaces, it would qualify as a minor development from a stormwater standpoint, so everything would have to comply with, uh, section two twenty, two twenty-five ninety-eight minor stormwater, uh, regulations, which is three inches of rainfall, you know, over all the new impervious areas. So that would be reviewed by the township engineer pending a, a board approval.
So if we were to approve it, it would have to have that stipulation?
Correct.
Do you understand that?
Yeah, I have no problems having an engineer coming in and saying that I need to do some work to alleviate any sort of drainage issues that we have.
Potential.
Yes.
You know, I think the only one, I assume the addition is gonna have the same siding or everything's gonna match.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. This time, are there any members of the public who have a question of the applicant? Is there anyone from the public who is here for this application? Okay. Um, anything else you wanna say?
Um, no.
Okay. Um, anyone from the public wish to make a comment on this application for or against? Okay, no one's come forward. You look like you have something to say.
I don't know. I mean, to me, it's, even though it's not really very de minimis, it's not really affecting anybody. It's for his family. It's his property. We don't have any really water runoff issues with neighbors. No one's here to object. And he said he'd agree with the town engineer, so I think I'd be voting for it.
Okay. Then would you like to frame that resolution?
Why not?
Uh, application twenty-four colon twenty-nine, Frank in Unit Chin, Chief, thirty-two Bordeaux Drive, block seven fifty-three, lot sixteen, Zone R-two. Recommend granting a C variance to construct a one-story addition, roof, front porch, front stairs, front walk, deck, rear stairs, new driveway and expansion, generator, AC units and pads, contrary to section four thirty dash thirty-five, colon four five six, ten thirteen, and section four thirty dash ten, I, with the stipulation that he will agree to the, the township engineer's approval and plan for drainage. Second, Ready?
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willing?
Yep.
Kaplan?
Yes. Okay. Your application is approved.
Thank you.
Um, at the next meeting, uh, the, it will be memorialized. The resolution will be memorialized. You'll be good to go.
Okay, and when would that?
I don't know. September something.
Okay, um, so I'm assuming that I'll?
Give, uh, give Nora a call. Um, anyone know what the day of the next meeting is?
I think it's the fourteen.
The fourteen?
The next meeting, Smithy?
I think it's September fourteen.
Fourteen?
All right, hold on.
It's in my phone.
Second, four, four.
Nine, eleven.
Yeah, second Wednesday in September. September eleven.
Eleven.
All right, so on the twelfth, give her a call, confirm you're good to go, and good luck to you. All right, enjoy. Application twenty-four forty-nine, Avis Budget Group.
Good evening, Erica Edwards on the land, this is running wires here in New Jersey. I'm here representing Avis Budget Group Inc. Uh, in connection with their world headquarters located at three seventy-nine Interpace Parkway here in the township of Parsippany. Um, that is, for the record, block one thirty-six, lot thirty-six point oh eight. Um, we are seeking a single C variance, single bulk variance for a facade sign. Um, our sign complies in all respects, our proposed sign, I should say, uh, with the exception of the fact that we're proposing a sign that is more than twenty-five feet above grade, uh, and that is the basis for the variance treaty that we seek. Uh, we have, uh, three, I have, um, three representatives, uh, with me tonight. Um, our, um, project engineer, uh, Mr. Halopsel, uh, from, uh, Bowler Engineering. Uh, he will be providing the, uh, testimony on the site plan and identifying the, um, uh, the sign. Uh, you do have the plans in advance, but he will be discussing, uh, briefly the sign variance that is required. Uh, we also have a representative of, uh, Avis Budget Group Inc., um, Mr. Jeff Le Luna, who's right here. He is the vice president for real estate, uh, for Avis Budget Group. And then, uh, to my left, uh, he is, uh, our representatives from Service Signs. Uh, that's our sign contractor. Uh, and if you would like to hear from them as well, or from any of those here representing, uh, or with, with me tonight representing Avis Budget Group, we'd be happy to make that happen. But we'd like to start with our, uh, civil engineer, if we could.
Raise your right hand, please, to swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name.
Joseph Holzapfel, spelled H-O-L-Z-A-P-F-E-L.
I have a microphone.
And I am with Bowler Engineering, address thirty Garber Square, Ridgewood, New Jersey, zero seven four five zero.
Thank you. I think you've testified before here, correct?
I have, a couple times in front of the planning board, yes.
In front of this board of adjustment?
Um, I believe one of each. I'm pretty sure.
Can we just quickly go through your credentials?
Sure.
If you don't mind.
Um, so I am licensed in the state of New Jersey for civil engineering since two thousand and twenty-one. Um, went to school in New Jersey Institute of Technology, graduated BS in civil engineering, and have been with Bowler Engineering for over nine years specializing in site civil design.
And you're currently licensed in New Jersey?
Correct.
I have no more questions. No qualifications, please go.
If you could pull the microphone closer. Uh, we, we offer Mr. Halopsel as a, uh, an expert in the field of civil engineering. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes. Sure. So as Attorney Edwards has stated, um, this is the plan that we are proposing. It's the sign variance plan. It was part of the application package that the board has received. It is dated February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and was prepared by my office. For everybody's orientation, north is to the top of the page. So as you can see, really, the purpose of tonight's hearing is for the proposed wall sign. It is on the front face of the building. However, that is not the face of the building. That is fronting the road, so it is tucked in. You can see the building orientation has sort of a U shape, so it is over the entryway, which you can see in the north elevation detail. Um, the sign itself is just over about forty-three square feet, and as Attorney Edwards has indicated, we are here tonight for the variance of proposing the sign at about forty-five point nine feet above grade. That's to the top of the sign, whereas the code allows for twenty-five feet. One of the reasons for that, you can see in this north elevation detail, is it is over the entryway for the Avis Budget Group. However, some of these, um, there are windows above the entryway, so it is on top of those windows and pretty much, uh, visible for the interior of the site, specifically the parking garage that's in front of it. Um, really not much more in terms of direct testimony. Happy to answer any questions for the board.
So in front of this building is a parking garage?
That is correct.
So if the sign wasn't up there, parking garage should be blocking the view of the sign?
Uh, generally, the parking garage is in front. It's a few stories high, so it does block the majority of the building from other neighbors.
So then, from the front of the building, what, what am I looking at as far as street going, lighting and stuff like that? Any issues there, you see?
So the street is to the east, generally, um, Interpace Parkway.
You're a long way back from the road, right?
Uh, that's correct.
I'm answering my own question. Thank you.
Yes.
Signs lit?
Internally eliminated.
Twenty-four seven? Well, obviously not during the day, but all night?
Um, I believe so. Um, I mean?
And if that's gonna be answered later, we can deal with that later.
We can, we can answer that later, if that's okay?
Okay. Hold on, we can, we can, yeah, we can get to it later.
We're gonna, we're gonna, let, let's let the engineer finish.
We'll go one at a time. Is there any, oh, I'll hold that question, too. Um, you couldn't lower the sign because of that big glass window there, right?
Uh, generally, the idea was to place it above the windows.
Correct.
To mount it on the, the wall.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Any questions from the public of this witness?
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I can't read the drawing that I have. What is the, the height of the sign?
The physical sign itself?
No, no, the, the, the?
The variance were, uh, so it's forty-five point nine feet, and that's to the top of the sign.
Okay, no questions from the public, no questions from the board?
We'll move on to, uh, the representative from Service Signs, Jonathan. This is Jonathan Holguin of Service Signs.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you please state your name, spell your first and last name, and tell us who you work?
Uh, my name is, uh, Jonathan Holguin, spells, um, Y-O-N-A-T-H-A-N. My last name, uh, H-O-L-G-U-I-N. So I'm the sign contractor. I'm the company who's going to install the sign. So I'm gonna answer the question regarding the lighting. Yeah, the sign is not gonna be twenty-four seven. We're gonna add a timer that is gonna control, we usually, the sign usually lies, uh, automatic, it goes on automatic, uh, six o'clock, and it's gonna be off like, uh, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night.
So it's not all night long?
No, it's not.
Are there any homes in the area that see this sign at all?
Can you say again?
No.
No?
Okay.
No, I'm sorry.
No residential?
No residential.
Okay. He's still on the market.
What was the time that the sign's gonna be shut off?
Uh, I'm sorry?
What time is the sign going to be turned off?
Um, it, it going to be off, uh, eleven o'clock at night? If, you're okay?
Yeah, I mean, it's adjustable. It's adjustable timer. You're intending for eleven o'clock, so it's part of the larger complex there?
Well, hold on. We haven't sworn in yet, so, so I guess we'll leave that question for your representative.
Yeah, yeah, that's what he say. You can adjust the timer, so we can go to twelve o'clock at night, ten o'clock at night, uh, whatever you guys permit it to us.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. So the timer's gonna, the light's gonna come on at dusk and go off at eleven o'clock at night?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? Okay.
Okay, Greg, we'll move on to, um, Mr. Luna, the representative from Avis Budget Group.
Raise your right hand, please, to swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
State your name, spell your first and last name, and tell us who your employees?
Sure. Uh, first name Jeffrey, last name Luna, uh, J-E-F-F-R-E-Y, last name L-U-N-A. And, uh, I'm the head of real estate for Avis Budget Group, uh, global. So, um, yeah, to answer those questions, uh, we, the, the timing, as far as the signage is concerned, is, the, the timing is, uh, it's on an automatic sensor, so it just comes on at dusk depending on the, uh, sunset, and then it's on until eleven o'clock at night. So what we're doing is just matching the larger complex, which is there. So we own our building, and then there's three adjoining buildings that are owned by, uh, separate property companies, and it's all, we're, we're just trying to match the same, uh, timing that's already established there.
Are there other lit signs in those other buildings?
There are. Yep. There, uh, most of them are monument signs. Uh, yeah. And they're all on the same timer.
But on the buildings themselves, I don't?
Uh, there are not, yeah. Uh, each building has a variety of, uh, tenants, and so, uh, we own our own building, and the other is part of a larger complex. So instead of having a conglomerate of signs on the buildings, uh?
Is there anything magical about eleven o'clock versus ten o'clock?
No.
What time do the employees all?
Yeah, most employees probably by six PM, six-thirty PM.
And then custodial comes in?
Custodial's in probably until nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night. Yeah.
Would you be willing to change it to ten?
Uh, we would be. Yeah, of course.
All right. Any other questions? Any questions from the public of this witness? Okay, no, no one's come forward. Thank you. Um, anything else? Arrest on all the testimony? All righty.
If the board approves it, you need a note on that plan, the rise showing, uh, the time it will be lit.
Okay. Anyone on the board wanna make a statement on this application?
Well, Avis has been a good, uh, corporate citizen and, uh, participant in Parsippany, and I think this is a reasonable request to, uh, help reflect their business, uh, and so I'll be voting in favor of it.
All right, someone wanna frame a resolution?
Let me do it. Application twenty-four colon forty-nine, Avis Budget Group Incorporated, three seventy-nine Interpace Parkway, block one thirty-six, lots thirty-six dot zero eight, Zone S U D dash five A, to grant our issue, C variance, therefore, it's a sign.
Second, Joskowitz.
On the condition with respect to the lighting as well?
Yes.
Yes. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Grignani?
Yes.
Joskowitz?
Yes.
Petty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willing?
Yes.
Okay. Application is approved.
Have a good night.
Ready to go. Okay, motion to adjourn the special seven o'clock meeting.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Right.
All right, we have three minutes. We do, 'cause I know that's two minutes fast. Because when I look at that, I get yelled at. All right, here we go, seven-thirty. Good evening again, everyone. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash six at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, once again, please call the roll.
Mr. Berkowitz?
Present.
Mr. Grignani?
Here.
Mr. Joskowitz?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Mr. Ready?
Cousin.
Mr. Willing?
Here.
Chairman Kaplan?
Here.
Our board planner, Mr. Chadwick?
Still here.
Our board engineer, Mr. Wallow?
Here.
And our board attorney, Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Okay, um, we have done the Pledge of Allegiance already this evening. You wanna?
And both professionals were already sworn in.
Okay, great. Okay, so at this time, I will open the meeting to the public. If anyone in the audience has business to conduct in front of the board that is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to do so. Okay, everyone's here for agenda items, and we will jump right into twenty-four forty-one. Oh, I'm sorry. I am reading the resolutions. That's what I'm doing. Um, okay, so we have resolutions to approve twenty-four forty-one, twenty-four thirty-three, twenty-four twenty-six, twenty-four twenty-five, and twenty-four twenty-three.
Forty-one, thirty-three, and twenty-six can be done together.
Forty-one?
And thirty-six.
Thirty, twenty-six and thirty-three?
Yes.
The first three, okay. Uh, I'm gonna get a motion to approve the first three.
Move.
Second?
Thirty.
All right, all those in favor? No, we gotta go through the order.
Grignani?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
I'm gonna get a motion to approve the first three.
Move.
Second?
Thirty.
All right, all those in favor, no, we gotta go through the order.
Brignani?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Willans?
Yes.
Okay, applications 2425 and 2423.
Need to be done separately.
Separately, 2425, motion for that?
Move.
Second.
Okay.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Josku?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Quinn?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes.
Willans as well.
Yes.
Okay, and 2423. Motion?
Move.
Second.
Okay.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Brignani?
Yes.
Josku?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Willans?
Yes.
Kaplan.
Yes. All right, now to the real business for tonight, 2432, Ronald Farrington, come on down. Pete Westmore, sir.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Yes. State your name, spell your first and last name, and give us your address, please.
Name is Ron Farrington, Arwin, F-A-R-R-I-N-G, two one. I'm here for Pete Westmore.
Okay, you are looking to do a 61.5 square foot addition with a 143.5 square foot roof, entranceway, 21 square foot of stairs, 225 square feet of patio, 112 square feet of a walkway, 388 for a second story addition, and also an air conditioning unit, all of which require one, two, three, four, five, six variances for yards and accessories and coverage, so...
How big is this lot?
It's an undersized lot, it's an on-tape.
I, I know that. I'm just trying, trying to find the size of it, like, oh.
It's 2,400 square feet.
Okay, I didn't know it was, okay, 2,400 square foot lot.
Yes.
All right, give us the rundown of what you're looking to do. You need to use the microphone also for our friends in the back.
All I'm looking to do is currently there's porch that goes out to the existing foundation. I'm looking to close that in, make that part of the house. There's a step in from the house to that porch, and we're gonna just square that off with a new porch, and then add a small patio and walkway going from those steps to the driveway, the steps, and that's it.
Okay.
And the air conditioning unit, there's nowhere else to put it, 'cause...
What is the patio gonna consist of?
Uh, either pavers or bluestone. I haven't signed yet.
Water can get through it?
No, it'd be impervious.
You wanna make it, you wanna caulk it, you mean?
I'm sorry?
You wanna caulk it?
You're gonna get it between the pavers?
Uh, I can, I mean, if you need...
No, no, we're gonna...
No, we're gonna lunch, it's better if it's not.
No, then no. Whatever, whatever you need me to do.
These little lots, and you put any hard surface on them, water's gonna go some ways.
Of course.
Okay, so you've looked at, you've got the information, you're talking about the applicants, you're gonna have significant increase in stormwater runoff from the property.
Question is, did you receive the August 8th memo from the engineer?
I did not.
Never do.
How would I have received that?
I would guess US mail. Yeah, I mean, it's a pretty hefty report on runoff, as you would expect when you are covering 64.5% on the property.
True.
So what he's saying is, if I'm going from memory here, you're gonna have to do some mitigation for the runoff, and also you're gonna need a soil moving permit, a minor soil moving permit, because your property is not level. He also says it's gonna be expensive.
The road is slanted, so, forgive me, I haven't read this.
No, I understood, understood.
What exactly is he looking to do? The whole road is slanted, and...
He just, he's looking for you to ensure that the runoff is handled properly.
Gotcha.
And that he's saying that you will need a permit to move the amount of soil that you are looking to move.
Okay, what is... You should read it, because one of the lines also states that it could be expensive. Yes, that's where I was going with this, right? Are we looking for a, a holding pack, or what are we looking for?
So here's what we're gonna suggest. We've been here before, so this is kind of the script we have.
We're just trying to protect you here, too, 'cause you have to comply with this engineer's request here, and before you proceed for, for us to approve this application, it might be worthy of the time to make sure you want to proceed if what you need to do exceeds your budget and your needs.
Our, our approval is gonna be conditioned upon you meeting the requirements of the engineer. So what I'm gonna suggest is that we carry this, you talk to him, and get, ask all the que, he's the one who's gonna be able to answer these questions. You see his name up at the top there, make an appointment, meet with him, and then you're gonna decide how you want to proceed.
Okay, I'll have to do that, 'cause...
Yeah, I think that's, 'cause if we say yes, it's conditioned upon that, and we could lock you into a lot of money.
I understand.
Yeah, we're trying to help you.
No, I appreciate that.
You may be talking about the size of the patio.
Sorry?
You may be discussing with the engineer the size of the patio.
Okay, let me see, adjustments isn't necessary.
Yeah, so what's the next date you have for this gentleman?
October 23rd.
October 23rd.
So you're asking the board to carry your application?
Apparently, yes.
And you're granting the board all necessary extensions to rule on your application, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I will, I will state on the record once again, we need a system where when the engineer and department issues a memo, the applicants get them. This is probably the sixth time in the last five meetings, the four meetings we've done this.
And this was dated August 8th?
Yeah.
It was almost two weeks ago.
Yeah.
That, what is going on? Why is this happening? Seriously?
Do you know where it was sent?
I'm working that off.
I'm guessing nowhere, but I don't know that for sure.
I got everything else from you guys, so...
Not from us, from the town.
From the town, this is the only thing I have gotten.
Yeah, and it typically is. We need a system.
All right.
All right, apologies for the second timeout, but we're doing this in your business.
Okay. Anybody here on that one?
Oh, was anyone here for that, this application? Okay, I think I know which one you're here for. Go out on a limb. All right, next one is, all right, 2446, David Biskowitz, 57 Intervale Road.
Okay, can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Have someone with you today?
Brought a friend.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Yes, okay. So, can you still read your name? Spell your last name, give us your address, please.
Yes, my name is David Biskowitz, last name is spelled B-I-S-K-O-W-I-T-Z.
Please speak into the microphone.
My address is 57 Intervale Road.
I'm Kenneth Fox, Fox Architectural Design, Ledgewood, Ledgewood, New Jersey. I am the architect and professional planner for the applicant. I can provide for this board and newer boards as just a architect and professional planner, and my license is up present.
I'm gonna cut to the chase. Did you get the memo?
Yes.
From the engineering department?
Got the original one and a revised one today.
Just out of curiosity, how did you get it? Mail, email?
Emails. Emails after calling.
Emails. Okay.
Called several times.
Yeah, just curious.
Good. So you called him?
I called him, several times.
That's the way to do it, okay.
Do the revised plans reviewed by the engineer contain a zoning table? 'Cause they weren't here in time for the zoning officer to review them.
The submitted drawing...
The one, the original submitted drawing was reviewed by the zoning officer, but you're, I understand that your, your drawings were revised based upon the suggestions by the township engineer.
The original one was...
There is a zoning table on the original submission.
I understand it, but my question is, has that changed with respect to the revised plans?
Okay, with respect to revised plans, no. We're here tonight to make a revision to that based on, based on the engineer's report and our discussions with the engineer and his, his revision report, which came out this afternoon, and we've made our deck smaller, and we've removed impervious coverage, we're gonna end up, with our testimony, we'll end up with no impervious coverage variance, and this table will change, absolutely change, but this information just was completed today.
Okay, so the, so you did not submit a revised set of plans to the engineer, you just had a discussion with him?
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, it just got the man, I did send him a letter, just writing all the details, in detail, in an email, but no drawing.
Okay, so do you have calculations into what the revised plans will require in terms of the impervious coverage, or is it going to remain the same as what's existing?
We're going to revise our drawings to show patios to be removed, grass to be installed, 199 square feet, that's one of our testimonies, and we're gonna make the, the deck itself 24 square feet smaller by reducing its dimensions, which will make this a 0% increase in impervious, removing that, removing that variance, there's, is existing, I think 1.3% over, but that's, it's gonna remain, it's gonna be a 0% increase for this, and the, Justin Lizza, engineer, gave a follow-up, letter, follow-up report today, I have a tie stamp on here, we do this afternoon, and in this, that I have, I took, I took, do you have that copy of this?
The revised memo?
From today?
Yes.
Yes, and in, in that, the, it's based on that revision, there will be no increase in impervious, and therefore, still, and maintenance will not be required.
Good, okay.
What about the other variance requests? Are those gonna stay the same?
Yes, we have, we have structure of the deck within this, within the side, within the side yard, and I believe that's the only one, this, this thing, not going for the house, the only new variance, the only variance we're seeking, I believe, is the side yard variance in the deck.
Well, there's accessory side yard variance, six feet allowed, you're proposing 3.3, that has not changed?
We're going to take six, we're gonna take six inches farther away, we're gonna take room off the deck, we're taking six inches off that, so that will increase, it will, the setback will increase by six inches, we'll be six inches farther away from the property line, but it will still be 3.3.
So it'll be 3 feet 9 inches instead of 3.3?
Correct. 3.3, it'd be 3.8, so...
Okay, good.
It's supposed to be six.
Well, allowed a six.
Yes, and it is, the 3.3 existing is the existing home, and we're, we're gonna have our new deck six inches farther away from the property line, then inside...
It's not gonna be parallel, I get it. Why, why didn't you just slide the whole thing over?
Well, we had to re, we had to reduce the square footage.
I know that, but you've got it off to the corner of the house, what, what prevents...
It is meeting an existing landing, which if it's not meeting the existing landing, that would even increase more impervious coverage for a new landing.
Okay, whether you have the pavers, that patio, that's what you're talking about?
This is outside the paper patio, there's a landing there that's meeting with.
Okay. And the reason I asked those questions at the outset is because I know that Ms. Smith did not have the benefit of a revised drawing to be able to redo her calculations on her review. So that, that was, and I know that all kind of happened today.
Yes.
Okay, and so I asked those questions just to make sure the board understood that things are changed in terms of what you're asking for now with respect to variances.
But from the testimony, you're saying that it's changing the favorite, so the variances they're looking for is less.
So the impervious coverage will stay at 27.77?
No, 31.33 is what, is what Jennifer's got.
Well, it says, I thought you said you were gonna stay to the existing coverage.
Impervious coverage stays the same, which is 31.33.
Correct.
No change, so there's no, there's no...
There's only, there's only schedule on the plan, choose 27.77.
So I, my calculations... That's for open mind, are done with our computer, calculating all the areas on there, and that those are correct, and that is what we have on our application. I do know that Jennifer, I believe the engineer, also do their own calculations somehow, and I, I don't have those listed, but I can assure you that what we've submitted for the calculations is most exact, it's a grassed look, I believe.
I don't know how you can say that your previous coverage is gonna be the same when you're adding a deck.
Because the existing, I don't know, I, I, we provide that, that testimony, I have exhibit.
Okay. Everybody follow me what I'm saying?
Yeah.
He's reducing it, but he's still putting his jackup back.
So I have a exhibit on the label A1, this is the, and it is labeled proposed deck plan and photos, it is dated today, and it is a board with six photos of the yard and a blown up plan of the deck, existing patio area to the rear of the house. And on this area, as shown on the, on the original cemental, however very small, we have shown accurate drawing of the existing patio in the back, which has a very low wall surrounding it, there's a built-in door, and there's an air conditioning unit here. We're taking all of that, which is now patio area, it's been part of the impervious coverage of the lot, Jennifer calculated that, we calculated that with impervious coverage. We are removing all the patio material, all the hardwood material there.
You answered the question.
Definitely.
Thank you. Just, just, just play a minute.
Okay.
So we are going to maintain the impervious coverage as calculated by the zoning department.
We have a 0% increase.
Okay, yes. The, the impervious coverage existing calculated by the zoning department is 31.33%, which is different than what you calculated. I understand, but I just wanted you to know, what, you said you didn't know what that number was, I'm telling you what that number was.
Well, I have, I have heard.
Oh, you do have heard, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we do this, if the board approves it, you will remove the paper patio and show them, are you making exhibit on that though?
That's what he's proposing to do.
No, the, the exhibit shows you what it, what it is, where it is.
Exhibit shows where it is, shows the amount of 199 square feet, it shows on our deck, we're removing one foot off the rear, six inches off the right side, and that is shown in shade there, that is the additional 35 square feet for our 224 square feet that we have on our...
And you labeled that A1?
And I've labeled this A1.
Okay. And that's what you live with, okay.
Got it. Any other questions from the board?
I have one question, I apologize. So in, in Ms. Smith's review letter, she, she also pointed out variants for yards and So in, in Ms. Smith's review letter, she, she also pointed out variants for yards and courts, open decks. Is that changed with the revision? Do you have her July 2nd, 2024 review note?
Do we have that? What do you have that we don't have?
This is so the minimum. This thing right here.
Yeah, this is the minimum.
And once I miss it, I miss it all for the minimums, huh?
I just want to make sure I got the numbers right for the resolution, that's why I'm concerned.
Yeah, so I'm not aware of the yards and courts, open decks section and exactly what it includes, but I, if that does include patio areas, as I've testified, our now revised submission is removing the patio area, removing portion of the deck, so that we have a 0% increase on patio, patios and decks and impervious coverage. But I believe that, and again, I don't know the exact wording of your ordinance for that, but I believe that that would make that construction more.
So then you're no longer going to need a variance for yards and courts, open decks, based upon the revisions to the plans?
I believe that's true.
You need a variance.
I don't know the wording.
I understand the setback is different.
I agree.
Yep, the setback has changed, which we talked about, it's now, it's no longer 3.3 feet, it's 3.8.
That's right.
Okay. And you're comfortable withdrawing the request for a variance for yards and courts, open decks, because you believe you no longer need that? Is that correct?
What, I said I believe that? I do not know the wording of your ordinance, the definition of yards and courts, open decks. If indeed that means includes patios and decks, then I am confident that we do not have interference. But for any.
So Mr. Johnson, I get exactly what you're doing, but are we really just talking about 1.77%?
Yeah, I understand that.
I know, I'm not saying you're wrong, I totally get what you're saying. You want him to be aware, he's not asking for that anymore.
I, that's what I understand.
Right.
Well.
Well, do you just want to ask for the extra 1.77%?
I would say that not knowing, not knowing and being aware of the definition, we will still request that variance from the board, and, and our testimony is that our actual is.
Maybe less.
Testify, but we will, we will, we do ask for that variance, so that we're not restricted to something that we're not aware of.
I understand, and this is all because Ms. Smith didn't have a revised plan to be able to redo the calculations. It's not that, and I understand, everything happened today.
Yes, that's fine.
And sometimes that happens, so, okay.
Anything else?
I have no more questions.
All right, anything else from the board? Got a thumbs up to the left, thumbs up to the right. Any questions from the public, either of the gentlemen up in front of you? All right, no questions, anyone from the public wish to make a statement either for or against this application? No one's come forward? Someone from the board, please make a statement on this application.
Yeah, I think it's the minimus in nature. You're going along with the engineer, we're not really changing anything, you got rid of two requests, so I'll be voting for it.
Okay, someone want to frame the resolution?
Go ahead, Scott.
Application 24, Collins 26, David Biskelitz, 57, Etteville Road, block 441, block eight, zone R3, recommend granting a C variance to construct an open deck with stairs, contracection 430-35, Collins 813, section 430-10I.
Second, Eddie.
Birkelitz.
Yes.
Bernyani.
Yes.
Goskelitz.
Yes.
Eddie.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes.
Ready.
Yes.
Willen.
Yes.
Okay, result is the application is granted, based on the discussion we had tonight, September 11th, it will be, the resolution will be approved, and you're free to go on September 12th. All right, thank you, appreciate you reducing that impervious coverage as well.
Laura, I have another one on Lewis, did that get adjourned? Lewis?
Oh, um, yes, that, see, it got carried.
It got carried, okay.
Yeah, they didn't notice.
Okay, got it. Oh, Lewis is on.
They, they never noticed.
I have it on, but.
I sent you an email.
You're up.
You did, okay, I'm sure you did.
Application 1921 Pacific Outdoor Advertising.
Board of operations here. Good joke there.
Yeah.
Mr. O'Neal?
O'Neal? Hey, everyone. Joseph O'Neal, the firm Garofalo O'Neal Rosirio, here on behalf of the applicant, actually the plaintiff, because this is a remand of a case from Superior Court, captioned Pacific Outdoor Advertising versus Board of Adjustment and the Township regarding a denial of their application previously. We have noticed in accordance with rules commonly referred to as Whispering Woods Rules, which is a case that stands for and outlines how a board retakes jurisdiction to hear a stipulation settlement. And that's what we hear on this evening, just a stipulation settlement. We're not going to be talking about the variances, we're not going to be talking about the proofs of the variances or anything like that, we're just going to be talking about the stipulation settlement. So with that, I do know that the board had a couple of questions, and asked us to prepare photo exhibits showing the visual impact of the modified board. And for that, I have John McDonough.
I think that would be helpful, perhaps before you get to that testimony, maybe just for the benefit of the board's refreshing of their recollection, and for the benefit of the members of the public, they may be in the audience, maybe you should, it would be helpful to run through the, the conditions of the stipulation of settlement, the, the modifications in general that your client has agreed to make as a, as part of the settlement of the lawsuit.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Along those lines, this is, I'll remind you, a proposed billboard at the Palamale Towing location. Billboard was originally proposed, the height bounced around a little bit, but what was voted on was about 60 foot in height, and now it's down to 55 feet in height. It was proposed to have two video faces, where each face flips with the electronic messages. I forget exactly how many messages.
Eight seconds, I think.
Eight seconds. Now what we've done is the eastern facing or right facing side of the sign, we've made that a traditional static billboard, which will be illuminated up until midnight. And on the other face, we're incorporating technology that narrows the field of vision that you can actually see the billboard with, so there is a cone of impact. Once you're to a certain angle to the side, the board actually goes dark, but we have an exhibit of that for you to see.
And so after the board initially denied your client's application, your client, through you as their attorney, filed a lawsuit against the board alleging not only that the board's decision to deny the application was arbitrary and capricious and unreasonable, but that the zoning ordinances of the township of Persipony are unduly restrictive when it comes to allowing commercial speech such as billboards, so, so much so that they potentially violate the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. So while that lawsuit was pending, and the town was represented by its insurance council, you on behalf of your client and the attorney for the, the town and this board negotiated these changes with respect to the application that were, I would submit, were the process of some very intense negotiations on, on both this board's part, the town's part, and your client's part.
Yes.
That resulted in the compromise that was memorialized in a conditional stipulation of settlement.
Yes, there was quite a bit of back and forth with the board, quite a bit of back and forth with the township, which is also a part of it. And if the board ratifies this settlement this evening, the whole case will be settled, not just against the board, but against the township. But the characterization of the discussions is true, was everybody had opinions and were able to work it out.
And I just wanted to make sure that we prefaced how we got here today, both for the board's benefit and for the public's benefit.
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Neal. So you have a witness, Mr. McDonough?
Mr. McDonough.
Great.
So, Mr. McDonough.
Raise your right hand, please. You swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
So Mr. McDonough is a professional planner and will submit, of course, for that this evening, but the primary reason we're submitting Mr. McDonough is because he prepared the photo simulations that you are about to see, was done under your direction, isn't that true?
Uh, correct, these are actually photos, not photo simulations.
Well, they, they have elements in them, like the arrow for instance.
Yes, 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 yes.
That was done.
Yes.
So with that, let's go ahead and mark that, I think it's, because it's the ratification, we could start with A1 again.
So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, for the record, A1 is going to be a three-part exhibit. It's going to be two photographs, actually taken back on April 9th, 2022, about two years ago, when we conducted a crane test out there to show the height of the billboard at its location at 60 feet. We know it's been now reduced to 55 feet above grade, but this photo document is what we saw when we were out there on that day. I'm going to start on my right, and I'll just let it come on over.
I understand. You have to sit next to him, sure.
What I'm going to do for the public's benefit, since there, we don't have a way to show you on a projection or anything, I'm going to take one of these packets and just pass it, you guys can take turns just looking at it. If we have more than one extra, I'll, whatever extras, I'll pass around.
Yeah.
This was as, it was originally proposed.
This is reduced down to 50, it was originally tested at 60 feet, and this is reduced down to 55. So for instance, in the first exhibit, it has disappeared behind the building.
So it looks like everybody has it. First thing you'll see is a view of the crane, and I put an arrow to show where the crane would represent the top of the billboard height if we're at 60 feet above grade level. And you can see from this vantage point over at the corner of Noble and Littleton Road, looking back to the east, this is where the residential homes would be off of, of Littleton, that there was a piece of the sign that actually pierced the top of the roof. The applicant has now reduced that down so that the sign from this vantage would be hidden by the building itself. This is about 900 feet away from where the sign would be. And then in the second page of the exhibit, I went all the way down to Serbo's, you've got the dip in the road, again, just a photo document that once you're down there, 1,500 feet away, the sign, like the sunset, recedes into the building and, and you don't, you don't see it. And then finally, the last frame is the view of an actual sign in place that utilizes what you heard counsel say is this light mitigation technology, which reduces the cone of vision of the sign, of the illumination, so that it's pointed essentially at the roadway. And when you're standing on the side for this, for example here, this sign is on, but you don't realize that from this vantage point, because it's all dark, and that relates to the light mitigation technology. So the, the three elements of change here, in the interest of settlement, are the light mitigation technology, the reduction in the sign height down to 55 from 60 feet, and now a static display, which would be, I'll say, on the residential side, sort of, you're driving eastbound, we call it a left read, and you're looking over at the sign, that's going to be a static display. If you're going what we would call a right read, that's driving westbound on Route 80, that's where the sign would have that electronic display that's pointed away from the residential dwellings, again, facing the motoring public coming westbound on Route 80. Those were the three key changes, and this was intended to photo.
Are we sure we are east and west, correct?
Yes, if I'm driving westbound on Route 80, that's going to be a right read, you're going to see that on your right-hand side as, as you're driving, and that's going to be the electronic display. That's going to be the, that's going to be the static display.
The static, yeah, the static.
Static display is when you're driving west, east facing, static.
If you come out of the precipice, Bogart Bridge, that face you'll see is going to be static, correct?
Exactly.
Gotcha, so that's the right.
Okay, if I'm coming east on 80, I'll see the digit.
That's, that's the electronic display.
And one of the things when we went through the stipulations, I thought there was a stipulation agreed to that the construction of the digital face is such that the ball, the lights themselves are either inserted or in some kind of a cop.
It's like a traffic signal, it's got a hood over.
I'll remind, I'll remind Mr. Chad, we turn, turn that language into appropriate technology to render color vision to be visible.
Is a wing appropriate technology then?
Well, I, that's not how it was described in the literature of the manufacturers, so that's why we used the language we did.
We all agreed that the wings would be put on the sign.
That you would not be able to see it, you know, like this, this technology.
Okay. How about we extend the appropriate technology to include, such as, is that agreeable?
Well, the language that was ultimately settled on got to something that could be easily understood and enforced, that's why we got to that specific language on the light mitigation technology.
Yeah, it's, it's completely enforceable for this limited cone of visibility.
And also with respect to the static side, I'm sorry.
Well, the static side goes off at midnight, turns back on at 6:00 AM, in accordance with the stipulation, so, should the lights be needed at 6:00?
Right.
But they go off at midnight. And that really is it. Just, is there any questions regarding what Mr. McDonough presented? Otherwise, it's the details of the stipulation, which are before the board, and of course, were published in the notice, the public's aware of it also. But that is it.
I have a question.
Yes.
We have photos here from April the 9th, 2022.
Well, that was provided for, as part of the settlement, that's really not part of the record.
My question is, with the new technology that you're proposing, how is this going to affect the homes that are on the other side? How is this going to be affecting their visibility to this sign?
When you say homes on the other, so you mean on the other side of 80?
Yes.
The nose of the sign is pointed at that, those homes, not the face of the sign, so they'll see the, they'll see the point of the sign, not, not the face, not the panels.
So they're not going to see it being either electronic or digital or static?
That's correct, and of course, we have a lit highway in between the sign and those homes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the house immediately across will only see the black, like the third photo. Nobody else is in the cone of vision that we were able to determine.
Any other questions from the board?
No. All right, at this, at this time, we will open up the, the meeting to questions of this witness.
On this testimony.
Based on his testimony. If you have a question, this is not the time for your opinions, and let me back up, let me explain how this is going to work, this might be the first meeting for some of you. This is an opportunity, there are two opportunities for you to speak as members of the public. The first opportunity, which is this one, you get to ask questions based on what he testified to, and that's it. You will have an opportunity then to come up at a later point, very soon after this, where you can say, I love this project, I hate this project, whatever you want, you get to speak about the application and give your opinions. So this time, it's questions based on what he said right here tonight, and that's it. Got it? All right, you're up.
Chairman, can I just ask our attorney something off the record? Is that appropriate?
Not off the record. To go off the record, we have to go into executive section.
Forget it.
You can ask me something.
I mean, if you want, we could ask them to all leave.
No.
Give them your cell phone number.
No.
Address.
Well, I, I guess I could ask you this. When deciding, are we able to say how we got to where we got to?
I, I thought that was the purpose of Mr. O'Neal and my colloquy in the beginning, where we got here.
But what happens if we also had something else that entered in that might have been discussed previously but was not discussed then?
As long as it's not protected by attorney-client privilege, if you want to make a comment such as that while you're making a comment about whether to.
Okay.
Adopt.
Gotcha.
Whether to confirm the settlement or not?
Yeah.
I think that's fine.
Okay.
I would just be wary of anything that might fall within the purview of attorney-client privilege.
Understood.
All right. I'd ask you just to grab a mic, thank you. State your name, address, and then you may proceed.
Nancy Breitman, 15 Maplewood Drive. Of the, the third picture is a picture of what an actual sign of height is, but it's not taken from anywhere in the location of where the sign is planned, and I wanted to know why not? Because with GIS programs, everything. the sign is planned. And I wanted to know why not? Because with GIS programs, everything, such a rendering could be done, particularly from across Route eighty at Livingston and the other states.
The intent was really just to be representative, to show that when you're looking at the sign face from an angle as opposed to head-on, the copy disappears.
Since part of the discussion in the previous testimony issue, that part of it was the view from across Route eighty, we were, we would be interested, could it be possible to have a rendering that shows it from across Route eighty?
At this point, that'd be very difficult.
Nikos Homiak, Lake Ottawa. I have here a photo-
If you're going, I'm sorry, sir. If you're going to testify, now is not the time for testimony.
It's, it's a question to do with this photo.
With what you have in your hand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are you, so are you, are you-
This photo was presented by the Petersons, a landscape architect, as a previous segment.
Okay, do you have a question, sir?
No.
Do you have a question of this witness?
Can this engineer show me with the obstructed sign here shown in orange, the actual reduction of the view from the historic property? The blight of the orange and the actual size compared to that landscape, if there is reduced of five feet? Can he-
I'm going to interject here because this photo was not prepared by Mr. McDonough. So we really don't know about the veracity of the underlying data. And I don't want Mr. McDonough to speculate on top of the photo that we're not sure of its, where it came from. And that was part of the original application, perhaps. I don't remember, but it was a while ago. This is just about the settlement, not, not about the testimony.
Okay, I thought prior to the settlement was the appropriate, appropriateness of the placement of the sign, and part of it was the historic property.
No, that's, that's, it's about the stipulations.
So the question right now is only-
Questions of Mr. McDonough as to the testimony he gave this evening.
Would this question be appropriate? Is this sign, will this sign be dominantly commercial or non-commercial? Is that an appropriate question?
That has nothing to do with the testimony from this evening.
Okay.
The only thing Mr. McDonough testified this evening about was the changes to the height and operation of the sign that was agreed to as part of the stipulation of settlement. So if you have questions about that, that's appropriate.
And the cone of the view. I thought my first question was the cone of view, and I'm showing the cone of view from the historical trust property.
The applicant's objection is that we have no idea whether that's accurate or not, so to expect him to comment on that is unfair.
I think Mrs. Peterson-
She's not up here right now.
Okay, all right.
Hi, Benny Wyka, Benet Court, first evening. How are you?
Would you spell your last name, please?
W-Y-K-A.
And what was your address?
One Benet Court. We're number one.
How often do you use that line?
My favorite comes along. Thirty. Okay. Just a question with regards to the drop test for the, that was done the first time. Has a new drop test been done for the second, for the lower height, for the new proposed height?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, so there's no actual, there's been no actual example of where a hole?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Przyguy, nineteen Oakwood Road in Danville.
Can you speak up, please? Speak up.
What, just what it was going to be about?
All right. I was just wondering, when you're all aware that they did the crane test-
Do you want to sit?
I imagine you're all aware that they did the crane test, and when they did the crane test, and they showed on the picture where sixty feet is, and you're just going to reduce it another five feet? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So was the board aware of how the crane test was done, so that you can figure out it's about the same height, five feet is nothing? Okay? So I don't know if you had the results of the crane tests or not.
Is that a question for Mr. McDonough?
Do you have the results of the crane test?
I, I showed the results.
It's really, it's really not part of the case this evening, though he did base that one photo or two photos on that crane test.
He voted, he-
So we're limited to those two photos.
And that's your two photos of the crane test?
Yes, these are two representative photos of the crane test, yes.
Why, why wasn't there photos taken when you did the crane test then from Precipiny Road? That's only from a view that really is obstructed by the tree. Oh, I was not supposed to ask. Okay. Why didn't you take a picture of the crane test from Precipiny Road on the bridge by Route eighty, or even after that, where, where more or less Livingston Park is?
Mr. Przyguy, these exhibits were prepared at the direction of the board to answer specific questions that the board had.
Well, that's my question. Can I ask a question?
Answer it. Yeah, it's, it's the answer.
Okay, that's the answer?
Yeah, these were prepared at their request. That's what they want.
Well, apparently, maybe it should have been a little bit more questions. Sorry.
So can I ask a question just real quick? So in the first picture, where the yellow arrow is, and it points to that little part that is visible?
Right.
That's at sixty feet.
Fifty-five.
That was at fifty-five, that was at sixty.
No, this is at sixty feet.
Right. So now, that little part might not even be seen.
That's my point.
Right. So even though it's, it's a small percentage of this, the, the number, it might be the only part that mattered. Because it was the only part seen.
That is, that is the point.
Okay.
From this view.
From this view, correct.
Yes. Yes.
Any other members of the public? Questions? Okay. Last call. All right, we'll close that portion.
Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay. So this is the time where you have the opportunity to come up and voice your opinions. I would ask that you be respectful, and not only of the board, the applicant, but also the clock. Okay? We're not going to do twenty-minute filibusters per person. And no redundancy. Come on up, say what you have to say, and that's your shot.
Julia Peterson, twenty-five Old Precipiny Road.
I don't know why you would want that. That's what I'm going to say.
This is about the settle-
I know, it's about the, right, I understand that.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and spell your last?
Okay, Julia Peterson, twenty-five Old Precipiny Road. Since 2019, Pacific Outdoor Advertising has been trying to erect this sign. The first series of hearings ended in 2021, twenty-twenty-two, and many of us were at all those hearings, and there were quite a number. And since then, the only thing that really has changed about the sign is it's five feet shorter. And the lighting is a little different. It's still an enormous structure. It's going to be on the highest point in central Precipiny until you get to Fox Hill. As it stands, if you look at the elevations of the various points, the, and the new sign will be at three hundred and eighty-seven point seven feet above sea level. And at that height, it will be visible, actually from Town Hall parking lot, it will be visible from one of you, it will be visible from the Precipiny Road Bridge, and from the Littleton Road Bridge. Now, I'm not saying you can read it from there, but the structure of this thing, which is sixty feet by forty feet, well, fifty-five feet, I mean, it's a big, big thing, going to be visible. Okay? So-
If I just have a moment, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to object by way of bringing up that my notice passes the notice of most of these settlements. It's very limited in what could actually be discussed. And Ms. Przyguy is going beyond-
I'm not Mrs. Przyguy.
I'm sorry. Peterson, I'm very sorry. Ms. Peterson is going beyond what I really noticed for her. So I'll point that out to the-
I thought we were allowed to say what we, why we are, all right, I'll be very clear. I oppose this, and I oppose it because I live across Route eighty from it. It's two hundred and fifty feet from the wall of my house. When there's a structure here, I'm going to be living with it for as long as I live in that house. And it's been the mission of me, my parents, my grandparents, to try to preserve this house for the town of Precipiny. I don't think that we can persuade someone else to live there. Maybe we're crazy enough to live there with a sign on one side and a truckload of house on the other side, possibly, but I don't know. The other thing about, I mean, I don't understand the Misty Meadows procedure, because all of the testimony that went into those hearings, which we sat through, was completely, I mean, it's, it's an insurance settlement, but we were not represented in those negotiations at all. We actually have no standing. Anyhow, all of the objections that we had are still true, which is it's two hundred and fifty feet from our house. We're going to look out the window and see it. And the house is important to the history of Precipiny and of New Jersey and of the United States. So, you know, you guys got to do what you got to do. But I do have to say that it's clear that the town of Precipiny doesn't share our goal of preserving our house. And believe me, that's a little heartbreaking for me. But I can, it's clear to me that the town of Precipiny doesn't really care what happened to our house, because they can settle to put a very large structure right across Route eighty from it. I wanted to, I do have a couple of pictures which I want to-
Am I allowed to enter pictures?
I've made my objection. It's, it's up to the chair.
Okay, well, I won't, but you've seen these. I wonder how many people in the board got to see all of the testimony-
From the hearings.
Or whether it was reviewed before the negotiation started. And I wonder why the negotiations didn't include us, since we're the closest to it, with the exception of the people hills of Troy. Okay? And I won't, I won't press this. I have all this stuff. I'll just go back. We, we watched the crane test from our, I have all the pictures of the crane test.
And I know-
Where this sign will be visible from. And I don't think it's a good look for Precipiny.
Ms. Peterson, you were represented by an attorney in the other law.
Right, I, yes.
So why didn't he join the case?
Why didn't he join the case? He offered to. He offered to, and the attorney, he offered his, his memorandum of law, and it was rejected.
No, I mean, join the case. He's an attorney. You have standing. Why didn't he-
No, we do not have standing. Because-
You had standing in the original.
Yeah, well, I wondered that too, but we were not informed about it. It is true that we should have had standing and we should have been informed, but we were not.
I'm sorry.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name.
Nancy Brighton, B-R-I-G-H-T-O-N.
Where do you live?
Fifteen Maplewood Drive, and also speaking as the chair for the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. I will second Ms. Peterson's response on this, because the town has very, the town, this, the zoning board and the planning board have shown little respect for the historic property, and that the Petersons weren't included, or it wasn't considered in whatever, whatever negotiations you had. This board, the planning, everybody knows where that Livingston Benedict House is, and understands its significance. All of you have been there. All of you have been at events there. But we've, you've let, continuing to let things to be encroached upon it. And that is what this is. The threat, I'm not, admittedly, I'm not a lawyer, but I do know that four states have complete and total bans on billboards. So it's pretty much probably a very good idea, and I've done a little research, not a lot, but billboards based on location is not a First Amendment challenge. But you've made negotiations, you've settled out of court. For whatever reason, you don't want to put the town through it, but you just put a historic property, a very significant one, to at risk. We're planning to hold, we've got the town council seem to be interested, New Jersey Revolution Two-Fifty. In 2026, we will be celebrating the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the United States with the Declaration of Independence. What property in this town did you think was going to be the hallmark is now going to have a billboard that we will have to put up with? And another intrusion in addition to whatever proposed warehouse structure is going to go down there. So that's the concern. That if you have the information from the first one to consider the historic property in whatever negotiations you were doing with regard to whatever lawsuit was going on, and greater consideration and a greater understanding should have entered those negotiations. Thank you.
I'll wait. I have, I have a question. The house, the house itself has been designated historic, hasn't it?
The question was that the house has been designated historic. It is, was listed on the National Register in 1973 for its connections to William Livingston, as well as, as a representative of eighteenth-century architecture and the tavern that was located there.
But the grounds were specifically excluded from that designation because the house had been moved, number one, and number two, it's on a rail, it's on a roadway siding. So it is not historic ground. It's a historic house. You do not have a historic viewship. And this was covered in the hearing.
And I answered that question.
But because of the nature of this, we're not really supposed to be covering it. But since you're bringing it up, I want to ask you, has that designation changed?
So-
Since the hearing?
The design, the National Register nominate, nomination has not, form has not been amended or updated, because typically it requires someone, you have to go back and do the research. It requires somebody to pay someone with expertise to do that.
Well, you're being a little serious.
I'm, I'm, I'm not finished.
The house has been moved.
I'm not finished.
And it's sitting on the highway.
I am not finished. I am, when I have, in my day job, I have thirty-two years as a historic preservation professional, working for, still working for, a federal agency. If a federal agency came in, like the DOT or another agency was going to do something and had to look at the Petersons' house, and took that nomination form and said, only the house is eligible, is listed on the National Register, everything else isn't. The New Jersey State Historic Preservation Office would write a letter that said, that's very nice, but the nomination was done in 1973. Nineteen seventy-three was seven years after the National Register was created and was among the first things. They were actually doing those nominations in preparation of the bicentennial. So they were nominating properties that were related to the Revolutionary War, and so they focused on that. If I was to look at that property today, if the National Park Savers was to look at that property today, they would look at that property not only as the house, and it's never just the house, it's a house and grounds. They would look at, they would look at-
That's not true.
It is true, because you have archaeology associated with the house, with the structure.
We seem to have gone afield of the purpose of-
It would, the entirety would be a historic district today.
Do you have any more comments on the proposed settlement agreement?
No.
Thank you.
All right, while the next person comes up, I, I am going to make a statement at the end, but there is something, there is something that I, I do want to respond to this, because the- because there, there were some, some mudslinging towards this board, and I, I do feel that as the chair, it is my obligation to address that. The last speak, the last member of the public was making some assumptions about our discussions. To say that we didn't show respect or consideration for the property, or where the sign is, or any aspect of this application or settlement is patently false. You were not part of any of our conversations, you do not know what questions we asked, you do not know how heated the conversations got, you do not know that we left work early to have these conversations to represent what we feel is in everyone's best interest, and you are forgetting that we already rejected this application. Okay, so, I would just ask that you focus on your statements about the application, really more of the settlement, and leave the vol, not throw mud at this board.
I'll say it, Dave.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name, spell your last name?
Keri Krauss, K-R-A-U-S-S.
And what is your address?
109 Delanco Drive, Precipiny.
Thank you.
So, I'm here to voice opposition, as is everybody behind me, to the proposed lighted billboard in our neighborhood, which would be illuminated 18 hours a day, seven days a week. This proposal was unanimously denied in the past, and the minor adjustments made by the developers, such as reducing the height by a mere five feet, do nothing to address the core concerns we've previously stated. The reduction in height is insignificant in mitigating the impact this billboard would have on our community. It still poses the same threats, disrupting the visual landscape, contributing to light pollution, disrupting natural rhythm of wildlife, and undermining the quality of the life we cherish in our neighborhood. We pride ourselves on tranquility and natural beauty of our surroundings, qualities that are incompatible with the constant glare of artificial light. Furthermore, this proposal brings into question the legality of having two principal uses on the same property. This sets a concerning precedent and could lead to further complications in future developments. Our small area has already seen significant growth, and with more development on the horizon, we must be vigilant in protecting the integrity of our community. We've said no to this before, and the reasons remain the same. Let's stand together once again to ensure that our neighborhood remains safe, peaceful, and a well-regulated place to live.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, and give us your address, please.
Nicholas Homayak, H-O-M-Y-A-K. And address? 26 Oneida Avenue in Nol Lake, Iowa.
That was one of the funniest things you've said.
Thank you. I wish they changed the name of the town, or the section of the town.
It's more of a poem.
What we're dealing here with is a complex ecology involving the landscape, the house, all living, all things living and non-living, including the visual environment. This sign is, is still too big, it's a visual blight, a light trespass, and an invasion of privacy for the historic property and anyone who lives or visits it or tries to experience any element of what the life was for the first governor of independent New Jersey. We have more ample alternatives exist for commercial or non-commercial speech or messages. So, there's many things available besides a large intruding sign. And not to repeat myself, I don't understand why the Highlands wasn't involved with this, because they do protect and they can give comment or advice on the preservation or the maintenance of historical properties. So, if the Highlands is missing from all this, I would contend there's something wrong. At the very least, it should have been a Highlands referral. The only, the last part I, I can say, and I have to say, I can't see how Precipiny can honestly say that they wanna celebrate 250 years of independence. And this, it's, this landscape is already, it's been intruded by enough, and it is, the mansion and the landscape and the community simply doesn't want it. I'm an American, I don't want it. I don't want it. And I'll leave it at that.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Can you state your name, spell your last name, please?
Mary Purzicki, P-U-R-Z-Y-C-K-I.
And what is your address?
19 Pocono Road in Denville. Okay, the one thing I would like to mention, and I believe it can be proven, that the land that the Livingston Benedict House is on is also deed protected when it was registered with the state of New Jersey. You can check that with the Petersons. So, it's not just the house, it's the land that's on the house too. It's historic, site significant.
Do you have any comments on the settlement agreement?
Julie?
You are misrepresenting the designation.
Do you have any...
Well, we'll note that objection, do you have anything on this application?
Do I have anything on the application? Yeah, I really do, I know, I have a statement to make about the Livingston Benedict property.
Do you have any comment to make with respect to the settlement agreement?
With the sign?
With the settlement agreement, do you have any comment?
You know, unfortunately, we don't have access to the whole settle agreement. I like, Mrs. Peterson said, they weren't aware of that, that it was strictly between the town, I imagine the board, and the sign people.
Mr. O'Neil, can you comment on what your notice said, please?
We attached it to the notice, it was published in the paper, it was also mailed to everybody. So, you have a copy of the stipulation.
When was it published in the Daily Record?
Yeah.
When?
Do you happen to have that?
Do I happen to have it?
Because there was things published in the Daily Record today that I read, and the dates were wrong, but beside the point.
Under the public notices, just bear with me one second.
And who was notified exactly?
Everyone within 200 feet.
Everyone within 200 feet?
Yeah.
All right, well, can I just go on with, with my statement while he's looking?
As long as it has...
It was August 9th, the mailings went out, and the publication was done. August 9th.
Pardon?
August 9th.
August 9th it was noticed?
Yes.
And published.
Okay, so then, can I just make my statement?
As long as it has to do with the terms of the settlement agreement, yes.
Well, the settlement agreement seems to agree that a shot, a sign should go there. I would imagine that's basically what this is all about tonight, and that it would be maybe smaller or changed in a different direction that's not supposed to affect the property. But we here feel it will affect the property. If you just look at the sign on 287, and you tell me you can't see that sign in Lake Precipiny, I don't know where you've been, you're nearly not looking. And if you're on the highway, it's a distraction. Yeah, I tried to read that sign on Route 287 myself, and I can't when I'm, well, I'm old too. But I, I mean, I literally cannot, the car is going faster than my eyes are to that sign, which really should be on the road, just like these signs that they keep putting on the highways. But my main concern here tonight is the very fact that the federal government, and you can look this one up, the federal government, when Route 80 was being designed through Precipiny, it would have taken the Livingston Benedict property, everything on it, including the property, the federal government. Then, the, in Livingston, where there's a museum about the Revolutionary War and Governor Livingston, they petitioned the state of New Jersey. Enough people came around, and they moved a federal highway because of the integrity of that property and that house and its heritage. And now, we are just gonna degrade what that concept of a good historic site should be in Precipiny yet. And how many are there left?
Thank you. Next up, anyone else from the public before I close it? Okay, we'll close the public comment portion of this meeting.
If you want to, you don't have to.
Do we need to go into conference?
I'm not sure.
We're not sure? If we're not sure, we might as well do it.
I think we should.
Okay, motion to go into conference.
Move.
All right, who would like to start?
Well, I'll start, I guess, the issue here is the applicant filing suit against this board and against the town on our denial of the application. Clearly, we, this board is to represent the constituency to the best of our ability, our residents, and maintain the integrity of our town. And so, right now, we've got pretty clear indications that there's significant opposition to this sign, which there has been from day one. And the case being right now is if we don't settle, okay, we'll go to court, and if we go to court and the applicant prevails, then we don't have any concessions on the sign whatsoever. Is that my understanding?
That is correct.
So, therefore, there was some negotiation to have making it better, all right? So, right now, this adjustment being made here suggests that that would be making it better for everybody, okay? And that's what we're asking, or being asked to decide whether we approve that adjustment or not. If we don't, then we are saying that we're willing to take the consequences of going to court, is that correct?
Correct. Okay, and if we go to court and lose...
Yep.
The developer can go back to the original plan, which you hated more than this, and do whatever he wants. Okay. So, I, I would just reiterate what Dave said. And sitting up here, we are not a board that approved it, you have to understand that. We said no, but we are being presented with the facts. And if, for me, if I think in what we've heard that we are more likely to lose than win, right? And then it goes back to the height that no one liked, or the lighting that no one liked, it will be worse. We might be making the judgment that we'd rather take the small win than not have anything at all.
Agreed.
And a protracted lawsuit and the expenses that come with that. So, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
That is, I agree with my colleague, I'm nine and ten of this.
Close down, all the way at the end.
I agree with everything that Scott said.
I agree. It's almost like we're being blackmailed. How do you know?
Let's not get to the back...
It comes down to a freedom of speech... Comes down to a freedom of speech question. There have already been indications...
I'm just gonna remind the public that you cannot shout out like this.
The court has indicated that it's in favor of the freedom of speech, speech issues. So, I think having one panel that's gonna be static, and only the other panel that's gonna be flashing is gonna be a big improvement, at least to the moving public on Route 80. And they've agreed to cut the lighting so that the neighbors will not be affected by it. I think that's the best we can do, and like I said, I think we blackmail into accepting this.
Aren't we here to listen to our residents? I agree with JB.
This board agrees that this is not an appropriate location for this sign. We made that clear, that this was not an appropriate application, we voted it down. If we felt, based on the information that we received that was fully vetted by not only our attorney, but by the township attorney on conference call with us, several, multiple occasions, if we felt that we had a reasonable chance at prevailing with the lawsuit, I don't think we would accept any kind of settlement. We can vote no on the settlement and let it play out, but you need to understand that it could be worse. And you say only five feet lower? That's a legitimate five feet, that five feet made a difference. I would focus, and ask the board to focus less on the number five than the impact that that five foot, that five feet had. In good conscience, I could not send this back to the judge, let it go to trial, and feel good about the potential outcome. I hate the fact that this is there, I hate it. It's ridiculous, in my opinion. So much so, that I've, as the board knows, I've had conversations with the council president about tightening up our ordinance to not let this happen to any other neighborhood. That's out of our control in the here and now. Doesn't matter what the future ordinance might read, or how the future ordinance might read. This is the ordinance now, our backs are against the wall, there is a metaphorical gun to our head. And if you really want us to vote no, we can. But then I don't wanna ever hear about it again. Okay? Anything else? All right, motion come out?
Motion. Second.
All right, time to, time to vote.
So, you're voting to accept the terms of the settlement?
I vote to accept.
Hold on, we got, we have an order here. I was looking at Nora.
Berkowitz.
Reluctantly, yes.
Rignani.
No.
No. Jostwitz.
Reluctantly, yes.
Petty.
Yes.
Quinn.
Yes.
Reddy.
No, it's us, yes.
Willand.
No.
Kaplan.
I hate that this is my last vote ever on the zoning board, but I do believe it's in the township's best interests to accept what we have, so I will reluctantly and disappointingly vote yes, even though it already passed before my vote. Oh, really? Oh, that makes me feel worse. All right, so the result is the settlement is accepted, and...
It's five, two, I think, right?
Five, yeah. We needed four, we're good. No, no, we're good, we needed four. I do want to, now that this application is over, I do want to thank the board for about 10 amazing years. We make very tough decisions, the public doesn't always enjoy, appreciate, understand our decisions, but I know that everyone who has served on this board has done so with the right... everyone who has served on this board has done so with the right interest in mind, despite what some Precipiny websites on Facebook say. But it's been a pleasure. Thank you for everything, and I wish the board the best to keep doing what you do. Motion to close.
Close, close.
Do we have...
Good luck, Dave.
Where's my cake? Well, no cake, but do we need to nominate before we...
Next meeting.
Let's do it.